Ready, we are live and ready to go and we'll start the meeting with a pledge of the flag. You know what, I gotta get this off right, this screen here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank everybody, welcome to our November eighteenth board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one?
Ouch.
Yeah, Meg? And Ruth, anybody with changes or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain from that, I wasn't present the last meeting.
Did you get that, Jody?
Yes.
Okay. Citizens comments. Matt is here, we're going to. I think it's, is it on the budget for the waiver?
On the agenda, where's the agenda? We should have you share things. On your screen.
Yeah, I don't see it on the agenda.
It's on, yeah, it's on the agenda.
It's in the citizens comments.
Oh, okay. Alright. So, Matt's here, I assume he wants us to pass the waivers, Jody, everything is in that needs to be in?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Matt?
Just let me.
Anything you want to say? Nobody has any questions, Matt?
I have a comment. I want to make sure. Let me see, we, it's interesting, this is one of those things that we were gonna go over. Mercer Park for public events. We're waiving the fee for the gazebo. But the X is by the park. And there's nothing, the impact fee, I know Chuck had mentioned that turning the restrooms on was gonna create an electric bill. And I assume that that impact fee would be passed on. So Mark should know that there would be something added after the event. Which I have no idea what it would be. But there could be something.
Okay.
Am I right in that?
Yes, yes.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah, I mean, the impact fee sometimes is after concert and we have to go in and pick up garbage because they didn't do it. And so we charge them what we had to pay to have the garbage picked up. So at this point, when Chuck finds out what the bill is for the electric, he would pass that on to the big chill planners. And because it's a thing where we have to turn the heat on for like three or four days ahead of time. To make sure that the pipes don't freeze. And that they're warm enough for people to use. Just a fact of life, unfortunately, that they're not, they don't normally operate at this time of year. So.
If, if they want, the bathroom is usable.
Right.
The options of ice cold porta potties, I don't know.
I, I can certainly appreciate that, but we've been doing this event for years and this has never been a charge that's been passed on to the chamber, it's a charity event fundraiser. So this is brand new. I've been involved seven years, it's never been a thing.
Trying to catch up on crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
I mean, we, we've certainly waived the, the cost of using the facilities and that type of stuff. This is one that's a little extra.
We've had, we've had, Mr. Mayor, we've had some years when they weren't open and we just installed those heaters a few years back and they, they haven't been there all the time. And, and they do work well, but there is an expense to them, then I think they've been in now for maybe four years, but it hasn't been all the time.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have any comments? At all on the event or questions for Matt? Anything else, Matt, that you might have?
No, I think we have everything else well in, well in process. I would just ask of you and the board that if this is gonna be a new fee that's previously undisclosed to the chamber for this community charity event, that it be put into a contract or writing or the paperwork for the park that we have to fill out and sign, please.
Matt, Matt, this is Jody, on the application, it does say plus impact fee to be determined based on discussion with the village engineer. And it was signed off on by Warren. It is on the application.
Okay, I understand impact fee is on there, but this specifically, that's that impact fee line, I believe, has always been there and this has never been a part of that or discussion around that, so maybe just some clarifications going forward, we can try to budget for, get some more sponsors or something, so it doesn't impact our charities.
How's everybody feel, do we want to? We want to waive it this year and include it in the future or what?
Do we have any sense of what that fee is or could we look up? Well, I, did the event happen last year, I can't remember.
No, it did not, it was virtual, yeah, so no, it didn't.
So, can we look at old bills from two thousand and nineteen and see? What? Or I guess would have been two thousand and twenty, early two thousand and twenty, we still had it. See what the cost was for turning the heat on for those few days? Just so they would have a sense?
It, it really depends on the weather. If the weather's not bad, it, the heat catches up pretty quick, the buildings were never designed to be open in the winter, there's, there's not a lick of insulation in them. And the one, the one year, a few years back, it was below zero for quite a few days and it took that long to heat that building up.
Ball, ballpark on what you think it might cost, Chuck?
The, the bad year, there was, I believe, it was like four hundred dollars. And then we had to run it for like four days because the water was frozen coming into the building. And I believe that's what it was that year.
Four hundred, you said?
It was four hundred, right, and then like again, if, if it's not that cold, it won't be that high, but it's just, and we were asked to put some heat in there, so we did, and then we found out that that's the cost of putting heat in there, you know, so.
Matt, maybe you can get a bathroom sponsor.
Well, and that's, that's really why I ask, you know, I mean, I'm not, I've been here seven years, I'm not gonna be on the board forever. Just for future planning purposes, this is an unexpected expense, so just to have some clarity around it, you know, it makes sense what you're saying. There's certainly a cost to it, I just think clarity and you know, some sort of documentation specific to that.
How's the rest of the board feel, do we, do we waive it this year because of not giving them enough notice or do you feel strongly that we should include it?
I have a problem passing that on to taxpayers that may not give two hoots about the big chill. You know, there are, there are many people in the community are really enthusiastic about the event. I think there's probably some others that don't even know it happens. And I'm not sure how you tap into the taxes, the general tax fund to do that.
Gets into the gift of service real quick here. Unless you might charge it to a celebration line or something like that, that would be the only option out.
No, that's, that certainly, that's a possibility, it's not a bad idea, Andy, for this year.
Can we split it? Fifty fifty for this year?
Well, we, we probably have a celebration line because we didn't have many celebrations. It's probably that most of the budget line is probably still there. And then in the future, we'll make sure it's specific in the contract ahead of time, so they're aware of it and they can plan for it.
I think that's all under the mayor's line. Celebrations.
That's fine. Alright, is everybody comfortable with doing that? For this year? Alright. Seems like we are.
Say, just cover the entire fee under a celebration line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, with that. Can I get a motion to?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think the year might be incorrect on the waiver request.
Oh, yeah, on the agenda, it says January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Alright, should be two thousand and twenty-two, good catch.
The date of the event is two thousand and twenty-two.
So now we're getting a waiver on.
Right, but it says twenty-one on the agenda, Bruce.
Oh, I don't look at the agenda.
Thanks, thanks, Bruce.
I'm looking at the actual form that they signed.
Alright, so we're, we're waiving the open container law. What other, what other waivers are we, are we including in this motion?
The, um, the fee, the rental fee.
Okay. Rental fees and open container. Can I get a motion to waive the rental fees for Mercer Park for the big chill event on January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, as long as, as well as a waiver on the open container law for that event? Can you give me some times, Matt, when it's gonna be in operation?
The actual event is noon to about three, set up for a couple hours prior. Clean up for an hour or so afterwards.
Okay, so will the open container be from noon to three?
Yes, yeah.
Somebody make that motion? Ruth, with a second, any other comments, questions?
I was looking at the, looking at the thing it talks about. And this is probably where Mike would come into play. Talks about COVID concerns. And as much as we don't know what's going on tomorrow. Within the, obviously out in the open air, it's not a big concern inside the tent, do we need consider, consider masking, that kind of stuff? I mean, it's a hot humid area in there, I've been in there working myself.
You're asking Bruce if there should be a requirement that.
Well, it's on, on the application, it, it, it addresses it, and it says that the applicant will follow whatever we come up with. So I, I'm just thinking that that's probably gonna be your call as the time comes closer. Yeah, and, and, and when we get into January, we can certainly consult with the the health department and look at what the guidelines are gonna be, CDC guidelines and for events like that. And as you just mentioned, obviously the outdoor shouldn't be an issue, and if we need to to, to put up signage, I think right now that the proper site would be anyone unvaccinated, we need to, to ask, but we could confirm with that, it'll be at that point in time and, and I'll coordinate that with Matt. Thank you. You go with that, Matt?
Yes, sir, yep, definitely, and we just did that, granted, it was all outdoors, but same type of stuff with Taste of Beeville and the precautions and signage and all that, so whatever we need to do. Definitely happy to work with you on that.
Great, very good, thanks, thanks, Mike. To that motion, let's add the fact that the electrical charge will be covered through the village celebration line. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. You're all set, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board, I appreciate your time and your graciousness and working with me on the event, so. Look forward to it.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Move on, trustees comments, we'll start with Bruce Stevens.
I think I'm coming across as the bad guy on the board.
No, you, it's, you gotta ask those questions.
Every board needs a bad guy.
I, I don't have anything to add to the agenda for this evening. I have questions during discussions.
Okay. Move on, Andy?
Just the agenda items, thank you.
Okay, Megan?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Ruth, you go.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Mike Shepard? Two things real quick. I need to call for an executive session for a police matter. Personnel. And then second, I'd like to say Chuck, I might give you a call tomorrow, I'm, I'm part of my Baldwin Hill community page on Facebook. And there's a lot of concern about the streetlights in our neighborhood. I don't know if they can be upgraded or where we, what happened with the LED lights? Our neighborhood's really dark at night, a lot of people walk their dogs at like six o'clock.
We, we just, right, we just talked to, actually, we just got ahold of Nakamohawk this week and their lights, we're gonna have all their lights upgraded with, and, and I believe your neighborhood will be in there, but we can check and see, but that's supposed to take place here soon.
Okay.
Give me a call tomorrow and then we can make sure that, 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 that area is covered.
Alright, Mike, thanks. So that executive session will be item F. Okay, we'll move on to Mark Wilder.
I'll stick with the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mark, nice to have you back.
Thank you.
I got a couple things. Last Tuesday, the ninth of November, was a pretty big day for the village. Chuck was ecstatic because he got word from the state that our Dastney grant for a hundred thousand dollars to start working on the electrical issues at the Canton Street Wells and stuff. After six or seven months of Chuck continually contacting the state and our local legislators. We finally got word that you can go ahead and do your thing. Those of you who are familiar with the Dastney stuff, they usually take a year and a half to two years before you can use the money. So when you're making plans today to fix something tomorrow, and then you wait two years. And but we got that money, then later that afternoon, we got a letter from the county that our Main Street facade grant application had been approved. That's five hundred thousand dollars of money from the county to go with some money from the businesses. So in all, we'll be putting over eight hundred thousand dollars into twenty-two businesses in our village. Which, you lump that with the seven businesses we got two years ago. You're talking twenty-nine businesses and well over one and a quarter million dollars investment in our village. Pretty darn exciting for me to think that our businesses are getting a shot in the arm. A lot of these were businesses that were hoping to do the work anyways, but really could use some help. And I appreciate Greg Humphrey did a lot of work on this, Chuck was involved with it. It was nice teamwork, we had I think it's Brian, is it Brian Madigan? From Segromo and Dunn Insurance or Engineering, and he helped. And between the four of us, we kind of figured out how to weed out a few of the people who had applied that just didn't qualify. And how to cut percentages off because we were still over five hundred thousand. Pretty hard when you get twenty-two businesses want, want money. And, you know. You can't give them all what they want. But everybody got a significant amount, and I know that Greg got ahold of all the businesses and said if we have to cut, are you still gonna wanna be a part of it? And everybody that he contacted said, yep, even if it's less than we hoped for, we still would like to be a part of it because we, we do wanna make our business look better. So to me, that, that's great news, I'm very excited, and so November ninth was a huge day for the village. And very excited about that. You might be able to tell as I keep saying I'm excited. Just a good time of the year to start reminding people, you know, the chief has done this different times, remind people about scams. Got one the other day, I got an email, I had a package en route, but they didn't have enough information. And this was a very official looking USPS graphic. And send us your address, blah, 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 blah. And here's the routing number, and it was a U S and about ten numbers. So I called the post office and I said I've never seen anything like this before, and she said, well, what's the routing number? The tracking number, whatever, I said, U S, but she said, stop. They never start like that. So don't answer them. Destroy the email, it's, it's gotta be scam. So, just to give heads up for everybody, this is a time of year when people are starting to get generous with their money, they're giving to volunteer centers and different things like that. Make sure when somebody asks you for some money that it's a legitimate cause, and if you have a question, call the police department, people there are always willing to help you. Some of them they may be familiar with from other people that have called. Others, the advice probably is going to be if it sounds out of line, it probably is. So be careful, this is a bad time to be giving money away. Seems like the Oshock a Lot event was a big hit. A lot of people around the business areas talked to somebody who was at the hardware store. And, you know, like at six o'clock at night on a Thursday, and said the place was absolutely packed. Because they had a big sale and all their, they had that little area of clothes and gift items. That, that room apparently couldn't even move, there were so many people in there. So it sounded like there were a lot of people took the advantage of, of another get together. And hopefully all of our businesses benefit from that. Just a reminder for the public, Turkey Trot is Thanksgiving morning, that's the twenty-fifth. The Parade of Lights and the Christmas tree lighting are on the twenty-seventh. In both those cases, streets on the north side of the village will be closed. Not every street on the north side, but enough of them. It's on our Facebook site, our website, I think the messenger will have them next Wednesday. I sent in the list. If you're not sure, call the police department, they'll make, they'll tell you, yes, that street's closed, no, that street's not closed. Somebody put a thing on Facebook the other day, is there any way that we can get out of Kandawick that morning? And I said, call the police department, because sometimes if you only gotta go like a half a block and there's nobody coming for five minutes, they'll let you through. But the best thing to do is, you know they're gonna block the streets off Saturday or the Thursday morning, plan ahead of time. You know they're gonna block the streets off for the Parade of Lights that starts at five thirty on that Saturday. That's not a time to decide to wander around, driving around the village on the north side, because there's just a lot of streets gonna be closed. And all the business area, the business parking, make sure I'm right on this, chief, from the Four Corners to Elizabeth Street, there will be no parking all day on the day of the Parade of Lights, I'm correct?
That's correct.
So, because it's hard, once somebody gets in there and parked, then you don't know where they are and you can't get them out of there. And it is, it creates an awful safety hazard when cars are parked in that area and people are stepping in between cars to get a better look up the street at the parade. And this, this eliminates that altogether. It's, it's Small Business Saturday. For anybody who's not real familiar with our village, you take all four of our corners, and if you go behind the buildings on those corners, there's parking. There's, there's a lot behind by Village Hall, there's a lot by River Street, there's the square, and then there's the lot Kenny's and all that lot that comes up behind the liquor store, there's, there's all kinds of parking near the Four Corners. So if you wanna visit a business in the Four Corners area, the fact that you can't park on that, those two stretches on each side of Oswego Street should not be a deterrent. We hope our businesses get a lot of people visiting them. And everybody is safe and we have a nice parade, and Santa Claus comes and helps us light the tree. And starts off the Christmas season in a nice way. Just a reminder, all the things that we think about, you know, where people are excited about Thanksgiving, people are talking about Christmas, New Years, you know, SU basketball's undefeated, it's a great time, everybody's happy. Just look around where you live and realize that there are some people might not be smiling as much as you are, you know, whether they've lost a loved one, whether financially they're in a tough situation. Whether they're having some depression issues because nobody's around. Reach out to people, you know, somebody that you normally see a lot going out to get their mail, you don't spot them for a couple days, make sure they're okay. Send them over a plate of cookies or, you know, a box of candy or something. This is, this is a great time for outreach from those who are okay and happy and have it, to take care of some people who are just the opposite. And make somebody's Christmas a little nicer, I know they have in the turkey dinner or Thanksgiving dinner, but from the rescue mission. Thanksgiving Day, they deliver to houses. And, but I would try the guy who lives behind us, lives by himself. You know, widower, widower for a while. And I thought, he's gonna tell me he doesn't need it because he doesn't need anything, because he can take care of himself, he's like eighty-six years old, I think. I called him up, he was so excited, oh, that'd be great, I love that. So he was happy, I was happier. I felt so good to make him happy. And it doesn't take much to make somebody happy like that, so. Reach out. The court asked me to remind people you still have to wear a mask when you go to court, and they're still taking your temperature when you come in the door. Papers that you need, if you've gotten a, a ticket and you need to fill out paperwork to make a plea or whatever, a lot of that stuff is online, if you go on the, the Village Balls or website and go into the courts, there's that stuff, you can print it out, you don't have to waste a trip down to get the paper, you can print it and take care of it that way. Again, I don't have other things to say, I just wanna remind people again, emphasize, streets are gonna be closed Thanksgiving morning, streets are gonna be closed that Saturday for the parade. Plan ahead of time, I hate when you hear somebody call you up the next week and you screwed up all our Christmas shopping plans and blah, you know, it's like we're trying to tell you, you, and you all know people around the village, particularly you know where the route is for the Turkey Trot. Remind them, hey, you, careful you don't get stuck in here Thursday morning, if you're supposed to be heading out of town, you might wanna leave a little early or wait a little later to go. So there you have it. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, we won't see anybody until after Thanksgiving as far as board meetings, I hope everybody has a great holiday and has plenty of reason to be thankful. We'll move on to department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda here.
Okay, code officer, Greg?
Just wanna remind everyone that along with the on-street parking ban, that items like boats and RVs are no longer allowed to be parked in front of houses anywhere in the village. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I'll stick to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our village clerk, Jody.
I will stick to the agenda, thank you.
Okay. Treasurer, Anna, or Mark, or you both want a shot?
I'll say something first and I'll defer to Mark.
Okay.
Um, I just, I just wanna let everyone know, I'm, I'm trying to wind down and finish up with things, we have our accountant coming in tomorrow. She's gonna do a procedural audit for the last year's worth of work, I'm gonna work with her and try and get some things cleaned up. And the other thing I just wanna say is, it's been so wonderful with having Mark, you guys are gonna be so happy to have him. He's jumped in with both feet and taken the bull by the horns and, and he's pretty much training himself, finding, he's got so many innovative ideas, he knows of different methods that are probably gonna make it much more efficient for the running of the, the budget and the, and all of our treasurer stuff. So it, it's wonderful to have him, he's been great.
He's blushing.
So Mark, I'll defer to you, do you have any comments for them?
That was really kind of you, Anna, thank you, I'm, I'm not sure that that's, the reality's as glowing as that, but I, I have ideas. I, I do have a question about the budget process because I'm new to that and I don't know, given COVID, what, what all of you wanna do. But I think Anna and I are intending to be at the Village Hall for the work session. And that doesn't mean that anybody else has to be there, but just, just to throw the option out there, and we'll try to set up some kind of screen share with the working document, if that's how you work, I don't even know if that's what you do. But I think you generally have a working document that gets put up on the TV that's in the boardroom, maybe?
Everybody has a copy in front of them.
I just have it on the computer. Chicken scratch going on, yeah.
Well, I may, I may, I may try to throw it up on on either a screen share or on that TV so that you can see what's going on and you know, just a little bit of a working document so that we're more easily on the same page and and I guess I ask your patience that I don't know how you do things. and I guess I ask your patience that I don't know how you do things and I don't know a lot about um, what you, what you may wanna plug into the budget and how you come up with different numbers and stuff, but I'm generally a quick study. So um, just, just kinda hit me in the side a little and say, hey, this is how we do this.
Yeah, kinda what we usually do is start out with, go budget by budget, you know, the court, the clerk. Um, you know.
Okay.
The DPW, the police department. Um, and just see where, first of all, nobody has seen any of the budgets really. I mean, we, we'll have them in hand probably a couple of days ahead of time, but it's a chance to kinda go through and look at last year's budget and see where the big changes are. And then we just start picking away, you know, to see revenue versus expenses at the bottom of the pages. And we're, we're over by three hundred thousand. We gotta start trimming and then people start, we ask individual uh, department heads, you got anything that you think that you can live without? I mean, obviously, um, Chuck budget will be the most, um, I don't know what's the word. He, he's gonna have a lot of things in there that he's hoping that will get through and he understands that probably some things won't. Um, you know, we need this truck, this truck, we need a plow, we need this, but boom, boom. And then we start getting down to nitty gritty and saying, what do you really need and what would you like? And uh, the, the chief's budget usually it, it doesn't have a lot of fluff in it. And you know, we, it, it is what it is. There's usually a couple of little places we can trim. Um, so, you know, hopefully uh, everybody is being not tight, but not over offering things in the budget either. And you know, and again, Steve Darkangelo used to bring in his budget and I think he went out of there feeling like a boxer who got pounded in the ropes a few times. Because he had all the luxury things in his budget. You know, and it's how ma- how much do we wanna spend on paving streets this year? Well, sometimes that's is it gonna be two twenty? Is it maybe a hundred and ninety? And the thirty thousand might be all the difference we need to make the budget balance. So I, I think you'll see once we start, it's, it's really fairly easy. Um, I, I might touch base with you guys beginning of the week and look at the revenue and say here, you know, what do you have for these numbers to see if you're, Anna's done it, you know, so she knows if things are out of line. Um.
I was gonna ask that now.
From the county, we can track them down.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Mark, I'd request you teach Dick how to screen share. So that he can put up, so he can put things up occasionally.
Yeah, I can do, I can do it.
Oh.
I get nervous when, when the screen changes and it's like, alright. Thanks.
Well, I'm not, I'm not an expert in Zoom, but my comp, we use Teams at my company for a couple of years and I was an expert at that, so, but I'm thinking Zoom's pretty similar, so we'll figure it out.
That's what we like. Good attitude. Alright, we'll move on to the senior center, Ruth.
Uh, just a couple of things. You mentioned the Thanksgiving meal and there's a meal for Christmas as well through the rescue mission. If you want the Christmas meal delivered, you need to give the senior center a call by December sixth and we'll make sure you get taken care of. Also, our craft sale is back and that's on December third and fourth from ten AM to three. Uh, masks are required in the building, so please um, cooperate with that. And on the third, we also have our tree lighting at three o'clock. So come and shop for your crafts and stay and come for the tree lighting. And I just wanna mention that the signage is up for the walking trail behind the senior center. So if you have a chance, come and check it out. Uh, I'm gonna invite the Canton Woods Board, weather permitting, to come out on December second um, after our meeting and take a look. So those signs are up and we're encouraging people to use, use the little trail as long as the weather permits. And that's it unless anybody has a question for me. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ruth. We'll move on to public works. Mr. McAuliffe.
Uh, yes, I, I, I think my first thing is gonna have to be to, to Mark to help us get those trucks that I think I just lost.
You didn't lose them.
There you go. So.
And we're not putting anything in the budget this year, Chuck, that you don't absolutely need, period.
I'd like that. Things are looking up already.
I am just an instrument of the board.
Forgot what I was gonna say now. The biggest, the biggest thing with us is brush. You know, we're getting a lot of phone calls on the brush and uh, you know, one of the gentlemen yesterday just kept asking me what the schedule was with the schedule. We have no schedule now because it, you know, the leaves came down like three weeks ago. They all came down at once and we're just out till we get them all. And uh, um, it, we won't, you know, as long as we don't get a lot of snow, we'll stay right on till we get them all up. And hopefully next couple of weeks we'll get them, we'll get them cleaned up. Uh, one of our, our bigger issues and um, with, or, or one of, one of the issues with plowing and and, and some of this is these basketball hoops. And uh, we currently have up thirty basket, basketball hoops on the streets. And actually there's twenty-eight. And uh, I've talked to Greg and he's gonna have to address that for us here soon. Uh, one of my big concerns with that is we, we had one of the, one of the brush trucks um, bumped up one of them the other day and uh, it, it didn't, it didn't do any damage. It just, it was close and, and uh, um, I, actually I was driving the truck and uh, um, the loader in the truck, there just wasn't enough room for the two of them. We got through and there, there's no damage, but these, these, these hoops are right out in the street. And, and if, what I'm afraid of, if the plow truck goes by and if they hit that, hit that hard enough, that could go into the windshield of the truck. And then, and the, and the, and the uh, the wingman in the truck, the plow could, could hit that. So, uh, we just wanna ask people if you have your hoops out. Um, if you would get them in or just get them off the, get them off the road for us. I know last year I went to a few houses myself and the people were great. They just, I just don't think they realized that it was an issue, but that, that's one thing we wanna bring to everybody's attention if we can. Um, we're just about done with the, with the uh, Christmas lights. We have to get the uh, snowflakes up. I believe uh, Jeffrey and Mark are gonna be doing that. Uh, tomorrow or Monday, um, the tree's up. Uh, we had some trouble finding a tree and the mayor was, let us have his second tree. And that went very well. We got it down with the help from the police department. We had some size issues and they ended up shutting the whole street down for us in the Swigga Street and coming out of uh, coming out of uh, Candlewick, but it went pretty painless. The crane works out really well. It just grabs it, lays it down, puts it back in again. But thanks for the help, Mike. Um, that was, it was, it was a little bigger than we thought, but we got it. Uh, the damn lights, the, um, we had trouble with the lights. Um, they've been replaced. We have new lights. They, there was no charge form. They're back up again. The hardest part with those is programming them. They don't have a good way to program them. And we're gonna, we're gonna work on, we're gonna get some Christmas lights up there, some Christmas colors up there and get that going. Uh, Mayor already talked about a grant we got. That was good news. I was in with the engineer today. We're just trying to get some things together and wanna get back with public works on how we can get this program or how we can get the, um, the rebuild of the Canton Street water, water plant, uh, moving. Other than that, no questions. I'm good.
Very good. Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah.
And Chuck told me the other day that from the time they started cutting the tree to the time it was in the ground at the square was two hours. Pretty efficient. And we had the crane lifted up and put it on the trailer. And as Chuck said, once it was on the trailer on Bray Side, it was shoulder to shoulder on the street. There was, you couldn't even walk by on one side and, and the other one was just about to the edge. So I thought, wow, they turned down on the edgewood. You have that median. That had to be a tough, tough move. And then somebody put on Facebook, what was there? A bank robbery in the village at all? A street shutdown or cops all over the place? And somebody else said, the village brought their tree through. And oh, okay, so apparently I got everybody's attention.
Right. Another quick thing, um, our, our tree takedowns, um, there's, they're almost all on the ground now. Um, they're gonna come back and uh, next week or so and grind the stumps. That went, that went very well. We've got a couple more in Mercy Park that's difficult to get to because they're between the gazebo and the fence. And it's really wet. They're gonna try to get those Monday, but this company did a great job. Um, cleaned them all up and uh, that, that project's been done.
Very good. Good job, Chuck. Thank you. We'll move on to the police department. Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of items I'd like to touch on first. Uh, obviously is uh, the over parking now in the, in the village. And uh, that overnight parking ban is, is in effect. Uh, I would ask all village residents to please uh, make sure you park uh, off the street. Hours at one thirty and, and six AM. Uh, this is to allow Chuck and, and his staff to uh, the ability to, to clear the roads of snow. I believe there's some white stuff in the forecast maybe next week. So if uh, people could do that, we're gonna be putting warning tickets out for a bit. And then we'll actually start having to uh, to ticket vehicles. It's not something we wanna do. But it is a, a, a safety issue and, and allows our street to get plowed completely. And as I mentioned previously, some of those streets are kinda narrow. And if uh, we can't get them plowed, it becomes difficult, especially for larger emergency vehicles like ambulances or fire trucks to uh, to safely pass those. So uh, that, that's an important thing uh, for us and, and, and for obviously Chuck and, and the crew there at the DPW. Uh, we continue uh, here at the police department to consult with our department heads. Um, protocols and contact tracing as it relates to uh, the quarantine. Uh, we do have an employee out right now on, on COVID uh, protocols whose uh, whose family is positive and, and, and they themselves are under a quarantine order. So uh, those types of things do continue and uh, and, and we are working uh, diligently every day to maintain uh, uh, the operation of the village on, on those types of things. And uh, obviously uh, this'll be Anna's uh, last meeting, I believe. Just wanna, I'll have a private conversation with her, but appreciate all you've done over the year. For uh, for myself personally in, in the department and I've enjoyed working with you. And uh, the, the open floor of communication is, has always been nothing but exemplary. So thank you and uh, enjoy your retirement. It's most certainly well deserved.
Thank you very much. You've been nice to work with. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we all pretty much echo your sentiments, Mike. I think we we've all enjoyed our times with Anna, especially when it's birthday time. She makes the best cakes in the village, I think. Um, but, but she's always been such a uh, nose to the grindstone. Get it done, get it right. Um, that, when you realize the implications of not getting it right. It, it's a comfort to know that, that the person in there is, she's more worried about it than you are. So, um, we will miss you, but we're happy that you're gonna have some time to do some things and uh, less pressure on you and, and we can start going after Mark now. Mark probably listens to better music than you do. Alright, um, move on to pending business. Can I get a motion to transfer funds from G eight one two zero point one slash sewer plant personnel to G one four four zero point four slash engineer contractual in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Who, Andy? A second? Megan? All in favor?
Are we going to leave it like that or are we going to follow Bob's recommendation? And make it a professional whatever account?
Oh, I tried, I forgot. How, how would we word that, Bob?
Well, there would, you, uh, it would be either to go to the uh, uh, the uh, a, account under, under sewer of, of G eighty-one twenty-two. I think it was Mark, what did I say? Three or four? Or, or do a one, one for professional services? I'm sorry?
G fourteen forty. It's, it's um, engineer contractual, which is what we use for the other funds. We already have a
That's general, the, isn't that a general bus, a general village uh, uh, ledger load? It's not, it's not within the
It's the same number for each fund, but we put the different letter in front of it.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it would be, it would be was G fourteen forty then? Okay, so I'm sorry. That would, so that would be, that would be under the uh, that's within the, the um, uh,
Sewer fund.
Sewer fund, yeah.
Well, then that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna have one in each fund. We have one in, in general, one in sewer and one in water. And then when they need, when they use it, whatever they're spending the money on, we have to segregate, decide which department it's coming out of. It should come out of.
We're not moving funds. It's just creating the account in the budget.
I'm just moving it. The, the line item is being moved. The money's being moved down.
Okay. So that, that, that would, that would be okay.
Okay. You're, you're good with that, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's carried. Um, I'm not sure what we should do with item B. Bob, should we just hold off on that? I mean,
Yeah, I, I would recommend that we table that until the next meeting.
Can I get a motion to table item B till the next meeting? Ruth? Second, Megan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's two. Alright, under new business. And get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the affidavits of collection reconciliation, turning over the list of unpaid village taxes for the tax year twenty twenty-one. Now, it would be twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Right? In the amount of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, Town of Van Buren Properties, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Town of Lysander Properties, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, fifty-nine cents. And we turn that over to Onadoga County for collection. Got Mark Wilder and Mike Shepherd with a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Um, item B, get a, get a motion to set a budget work session via Zoom for March first twenty twenty-two, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three budget for Thursday, December second, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. Ruth, Pico and Mark Wilder? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Dick, it was at five thirty, not six thirty.
Well, I changed it to six thirty.
Oh, okay.
Public Works is gonna meet at five thirty because that will be the first time they see the Chuck's budget.
Okay.
So what the public uh, Public Works meeting will be five thirty to six thirty and then we'll start with the other budget, regular budget.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, um, uh, the public works folks, is it appropriate for me to come to that meeting, the public works meeting to, to look at that budget with you?
Sure, anybody can go.
Uh, okay. Do you guys, do you guys care?
No.
Okay. Just as part of the learning experience here, but what, what you guys talk about and how, how it goes.
Yeah, I think you'll be very um, very well educated sitting in with that group.
Yeah, good, okay.
With the public work stuff, so I think um, it's good for you.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay. Item C, can I get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the twenty twenty-two Meals on Wheels Extended Facility Use Agreement upon the village attorney's review? Andy was second from Mark. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. That's, aye, not an opposed. Um, item D, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, December second, twenty twenty-one to consider a proposed local law adopting pursuant to cannabis law. Subsection one thirty-one opting out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries and or onsite cannabis consumption establishments from locating and operating within the boundaries of the village of Baldenville. Motion, Mark? Second, Megan? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Is the same night as we're working on the budget interest?
Item E.
Could I discuss something under that?
Sure.
Um, I was hoping that before then, if you, your meet with county people, could you find out the guy, the stuff that Bob provided us, the materials states that there will be an eight percent tax on sales. Um, four percent of that would be, go to the state, four percent would come back to the county with the county entitled to retain twenty-five percent of that four percent or a quarter of that. Is the county planning on doing that?
Okay.
Um, like then, I mean, this tax revenue, I, we had this discussion is really up in the air. We don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you talk to some people and they'll say, boy, you really hate to let a lot of good money go. And then other people are going, it's really not gonna be that much money.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Because then you split it with, between the towns and the village if, if the towns are included. So whatever that
This public hearing, at that point, do we need to have determined? Of course, we're opting out with, if we go ahead with that. But the, then we need to come up But that then we need to come up with a cost sharing with the towns.
Yeah.
Not in favor of a
On Facebook.
Fifty-fifty at all.
Yeah.
Uh, we got, my wife said we got booted off Facebook. Let me see if I can get back on live. So that's not where I wanted to go.
It's about five minutes ago.
We're almost done unfortunately, but. Okay.
Dan, we're talking about marijuana.
Yeah.
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 Bruce, while we're in a holding pattern here, can you decide or talk to Megan and decide if you want to meet in person to go over the budget? I'm okay with that if you guys want to meet at the village hall, let's say.
I would be fine with that.
Me too. I, I would do better probably looking at the papers in my hand and.
Right, so five-thirty.
The BK, Chuck, Mark will be at village hall?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
All right, let's see here. Says it's setting it up to go back live. All right. All right, we're back live. Sorry for anybody who was watching that we somehow departed and we are now back. Um, item E, I get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between the Anadog County Department of Adult and Long-Term Care Services and the village of Baldwensville for the contract period of April first, twenty-twenty-one through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four for community services for the elderly slash neighborhood advisor program. This program includes, but is not limited to providing information and assistance to older individuals such as transportation services to older residents in the Baldwensville area. Motion, Mark? So we'll get a second. Um, Andy? Um, any questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. And that's all we have except for executive session. Is there anything else that we need to discuss before we leave the public meeting? This time planned leaving? Everybody's set? Nobody's got any other things to talk about? Then can I get a motion to move into executive session for, uh, police personnel issues? Got Mike Shepherd and Ruth Seaco? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Go, go.